Okay. In motion, Rick.
Hello?
Sorry. On there?
Hi. Two items. One, first was Marathon Health. I think Laura, you had some questions answered this week. You got help from me as well.
You did.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. Absolutely. I appreciate it. It was a student in class who asked a question that everyone else found that's probably did some. I don't know what it was. That's what I felt. So I appreciate you asking those questions. Answered fairly well. And Mike is going to be here shortly. And he had said that, may I just give you an idea of where they're at? That they had tabled their discussion of a vote. So they're not preparing to vote as I was told the previous week. So something they have come up on their end as well. And I think as much... We should just kind of be aware where we're at. If we're ready to vote, if we need more information. There's less of a rush for this, if we determine.
I think so, yeah. I don't think that... I think the rush is really about the facility itself, that it's available. It's, you know, the price of its reasonable location. But doesn't mean there are other options down the road with facilities. I think maybe that their tabling probably was further conversation about the difference between a physician and a mental health provider versus a P A and a nurse. And the cost discrepancy between the two. Where I think that obviously the physician and the mental health provider is more upfront cost, but you're going to return back more on the other end in reimbursement and savings by having that offer. It's just that, I think, more sticker shock of the difference between the two. That's probably what they're having. I'll find out more. I'll give a call tomorrow and find out more about their...
If by chance a facility is longer available when we're ready to vote one way or the other, do they have like one, number two, number three?
They have other facilities that they're looking at. The important part of this one is it's already set up as a pre-existing medical facility. So we wouldn't incur as many of those initial startup costs for equipment and things like that. You know, they wouldn't be going in and doing an overhaul or redesigning some space which, you know... So typically, they're looking for something like that first. But there is that, you know, the ability to be able to reshape a space away from a construction standpoint. Obviously, it will be a little bit more upfront.
Why, to catch what was mentioned earlier, the responses. Are the questions and responses that we've seen shared with the E M B board as well as me? And somebody who you said as far as they could be the questions that we have that they didn't think of for you?
Not that I'm aware of, definitely.
Yeah, I could ask. Melissa.
Melissa Silver. Yeah, I could ask. Obviously, they're kind of on hold now. I can share those with her, see if she can share their questions with us.
That'd be helpful.
Right.
Yeah. Mike brought up a good point that we're negotiating.
Yeah. So, right, we could look at, you know, really that percentage of return on investment piece and maybe negotiate that a little bit. I think there's some opportunity there. Before, it's completely entering into that contractual agreement that, you know, there might be some wiggle room there to bring that down a little bit. So we could, obviously, probably have that... The attorneys would probably have that conversation with their attorneys. And Jason Van Postenizer would have a conversation with Mark from Marathon to have that discussion as well.
So what part would be negotiable in it? Like, I have no choice. So how, what area would be...
Right. So in looking at like the return on investment percentage, I think that we could look at negotiating that piece of it from them. So they might take a little bit less initially.
Oh, I thought you said...
Right.
Then, I'm unclear a little bit on if, let's say, May and Edwell wanted to have the physician option. I don't know. How would it work? Would you just pay a less percentage of the startup or how that would go? I guess we should enter.
I would... I think that if the... We both have to go in the same, right? It would be one physician and then one mental health provider, probably in there. It would really have to be the... I think both districts agreed on whether it's going to be a P A or it's going to be a doctor. Which way are we going to go? But we both would have to, I think, from a financial standpoint, would have to go in the same.
So that, we have to factor that into our decision as well?
Yeah, yeah.
So might you... That would be something very interesting. Is that a change? As you saw, they sent over what the difference would be.
Yeah.
And it was, you know, it was sensational. How do we feel about being prepared to take a vote? I'm kind of out of touch right now in terms of voting.
I'd like to see what the questions were that the E M B folks were asking as well as what we... Because I thought very valuable questions on our end. But I'd love to see what kind of questions they asked and the answers. And maybe Mike could share. I don't know. Just curious to see where they're at.
Not familiar questions.
Yeah, are you?
Not familiar.
Oh, you're not? Okay. So that's what we thought. Maybe you could find out.
I'll email her. I'll email her.
Yeah, that's great.
See if they had similar kind of back and forth over time and see if we can share.
Got a hint of Mark, but I, you know, Mark emailed me again today. He's more of a... Got more questions, just let me know. They'll get back to us as soon as they can.
I shared with Dr. Green that there's no timeline. It's kind of an artificial timeline. It's a timeline. The idea was, there's a pretty good facility that people feel to be more than acceptable. And if we wanted that, then we would need to make a decision or something. But there really isn't a timeline.
Well, thanks just continuing on health care continuing to go up in the 40 years I've been in the business. It's just every year, there's something. Any kind of cost savings that we can have to our folks here, to the district, to the taxpayers is critical. And this is just an option. This is an option for our folks that work here. It's not part of the contract. So it's an opportunity. It's one that I was unaware of until it was brought to our district as a presentation. So it's kind of neat.
I think one of the major upticks in costs is the mental health area. So when I heard that as an option, that kind of, I guess we should look at... I don't know how much information we have on cost for us, for mental health care.
For just the mental health care, the P A and the nurse.
Compared to... That might be something that'd be worth looking at as an increase, particularly in this quarter.
So I've had a couple of conversations with Christina Braga from E M B. Or is there Assured Partners now, so their official name is? And there's a pretty good pot of money at the state level in terms of grants, you know, that are out there. So there's maybe some intention to look at funding that portion of it. Would offset some of that with a grant possibly.
Now, do we have the internal... We talked about this before. Internal grant writers?
We have a company that we work with. Yeah, they'll write any grant that we want.
Have we recently got a report from E N I on the E A P process of our folks taking advantage of that? Because I know included in that is mental health included that. It's like if you're having issues with family members, like they have Alzheimer's or...
Right.
Or, you know, folks that are, they need to be put in a long-term care facility, just counsel. They do so many different things.
Yeah.
Do we have like a usage number for...
I wouldn't say the high usage. I think that there's, you know, there's some particular situations where you point people in that direction to be able to have those conversations.
We had the same issue in the former district that I worked for. It wasn't used as much as what it was. It was very good and it wasn't used as much as we wished it was to help our people, so...
At the risk of repeating myself, from last meeting, again, I've been lucky enough or unlucky enough to have sat through several of these. My initial thought was, why would we get into healthcare business? And that's not really what we're doing. I think we're providing a service, you know, as far as a user and, you know, all three. You know, the idea of, we travel anyways to go to a physician, to go in A zero or H S A potentially and get a prescription at the same spot as opposed to maybe $120 is incentive as for the user standpoint.
Absolutely.
You know, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I think we need, they're projecting 28 to 32 percent of your participation rate. And it's about $1.2 million over the course of five years of cost savings. And I think both May and Edwell and Orego really, through Christina's help at E M B, when we switched to the high deductible plan, that was really new in this area. Other parts of the state had done it. We jumped in and both reap the savings of that. And there's not a lot of other vehicles to save money and help with insurance. So, you know, I think Marathon Health wants to get into New York. I think this model is going to take off. Again, I feel like at the very least, we're going to break even and comfortable with that.
So I did bring it up, some meetings with Jeff Madison, Senior Deputy Commissioner, yesterday. Because the regionalization conversations were happening and I brought this up as we're working towards this. And he was very intrigued. At first, he didn't quite understand it. I think he was thinking it was student-based, or students were part of it, which would become a whole different, all waxed with S E D and all the other organizations. But I'm just talking to him about that. And are there opportunities in there maybe for some type of coser? And he seemed very intrigued to learn more about it and have a conversation on what that might look like. So there is a coser right now for, with the Keenan Group, which is a prescription drug. So we actually run that through capital regi bosi. So we get a reimbursement, percentage of reimbursement back on that side of the ship. So this could be, it really could fit because it's a service and it's a shared service. So I think, would it cover all of our expenses? To be able, I doubt it. But I think there'd be portions of it that we might see aid back on, which would be, that would be, you know, just extra on top to consider.
And then if more districts, if we allow more districts to be involved, that would increase our savings, decrease our costs.
Right. Right. I think, I believe some conversations are going to happen with the county. A lot of times, too, if you can get the county to partner, you know, there's grant opportunities there and things of that nature that get tapped into. So I think just initial conversation with a couple of folks is, they're interested in what's actually going on. So they might, it might be something where they come in later. I don't know. Or other, you know, other districts, they come in later. Bainbridge Self-Insured, John City Self-Insured, with their situation a little bit different. Is there health, there's a cigarette up there, Bill?
I think, I'm, like, it stuck with me at the beginning, Mike, when you said this is not about insurance. This is about health. So I've been trying to look at it from all different aspects. And I do love the model. I think it's a great model and I think I just really have concerns about the financial end of that. I do. I think the pharmaceutical, I have like, I think I put in there five thousand dollars to set aside. I think that's a very low estimate for pharmaceuticals to start up a pharmacy. So I don't know. It just, I don't know. Take that and take us, actually, for the first year, we're just investing in the first actual year of doing this and then the second year doing that. So we really don't even... But the first year would be what they have in here is that we would come close. It'd be the first year of that savings would be years three. So I just want to absorb it for that. You know what I mean? I mean, that's a concern. But I know the pharmacy estimate is low, you know, because again, I do have a son who's a pharmacist. You know, I just asked him, I said, you know, how about that? And he's like, well, he said, you know, he's a guy that works at company and stuff. He's like, we just spend a lot more than that because I think that's a low estimate. So I don't know. So I think most of our pharmaceuticals, we decide not to put prescriptions. But I love the model. I like the idea. It just makes me nervous. He's in a building. I have to be honest with you, like 40 hours a week and, I don't know. It just makes me nervous. It does.
I wonder if you should... To talk to a different, another district maybe who's done any different studies.
Yeah, and New York State's a different animal too. Like Jeff was saying, you have all these licenses. I think he said it took them a year and a half to get pharmaceutical license from U H S and they passed the one up in J C. So there's a lot of, a lot of little things that they're going to have to go through to step this up. I don't know if they dealt with New York State.
I think so. So I think that they have a facility out in Dunkirk, which I think he mentioned.
Yeah, it's not a school, but it's...
It's not a school. It's a, yeah, it's a...
It sounded smaller. It's kind of, because that was run in-house, like out of their facility, which a lot of places around here, businesses do it that way.
I can ask those questions if you'd like, as far as...
I can ask questions for that. That's just my need to. But I don't know. I'm not probably the one to talk to. But I'd be honest with you, I have concerns about us getting... I love the idea. I just, I wish we were willing to people join later and...
It's kind of an electric bus approach, you know? Like everybody has to have an electric bus. And it's like, nobody wants to pilot. And we said, after we see what's going on in the districts, we want to come in after.
Sure.
Yeah, I know. And this is a great idea. And it's a way to extend our employees' benefits. And it's a way to attract employees. I get all that stuff. It just, I still feel really nervous about it. Why, you know, just...
Wasn't one of the presenters, the former principal where she was...
Yeah, so, had implemented this in his district. He was on the first, or the joint meeting Zoom, I believe, and he shared...
He doesn't talk. Doesn't talk about dogs.
No, it was, so it was, yeah, he kind of shared his respect that he now works for them and obviously travels around with this, does this work. Spoke really positively in terms of how it went for them, right, in the meeting, so...
Yeah.
I guess, is there, is it possible if we could find the closest district to us? Whether it's somewhere in the region.
I think, I want to say down near Philadelphia, the suburb of Philadelphia, they have a school district that they've worked with, all I know.
Does it really matter if it's a school district or if it's a...
No, what made the difference to me was that it was in-house. Like they went, you know, with the lease and...
What my question in terms of, you know, talking, meeting with a school district versus anybody that's participated in...
I take it as like, we're, let's say, investing taxpayer funds versus moving private fund. Maybe a difference.
I see it as that, but I also see it as, I mean, not, again, we're not getting into the healthcare business, but it's something that we're buying into essentially is that's different. And my concern is that change is tough with people. And for people who drive to Guthrie or drive down to Sayre, even if it's closer to go to this, I don't know if a lot of people, if they're happy with their healthcare provider, I don't know if they're going to switch to save five bucks, 10 bucks, 20 bucks. I don't know. Might be quite a bit of savings, but I don't know. You know, personally, if I think about this region right here, I'm pretty happy with the Guthrie walk-in, what used to be Lord's walk-in over here. I felt like I could get any C V S right there, Gato Pharmacy. I felt like, you know, Orego anyway, I could get everything taken care of without leaving Orego. And I know all the employees don't live in Orego. I just wonder if there are people that are driving through the city so who are currently here. I know that most of the people do live east of us. I know that Gato is over there.
I'm wondering, Mark, if it's something we can analyze just looking at. I know they did their work, it seems, where employees and addresses and so on and so forth. But is there... It is included in the numbers that they gave. Yeah, but if we just tease that out.
I would like that. I would like that.
Curious to know.
Yeah. There was one sheet I think that was so small.
The manual.
It was, you know, something we didn't... Yeah, I think there's a lot to be said about that too. You know, is it going to be always the same? I know they said there was... I know they said they've been spending a lot of time, and I do think that's true, a lot of doctors are, you know, fed up with the fifteen inch, you gotta have a recline in your, you know, you have to pull the key each day, and you're looking at something different. But on the other hand, they can have the same doctor there every time, because I think a lot of people have a relationship with their doctors.
Sure.
And I don't know if they have that with this.
I think it sounds like it would be the same physician that would be in there, unless that makes the work goes a bit south for me. I think we have input in that, it's our district's job, working with that. What we're really, what are we really looking for, you know, in terms of a physician? I don't think ultimately we're hiring them, but we're get, we're able to at least give input.
Any other questions, any other suggestions about more data to make a better, more informed decision?
What was the report, what are you calling?
We're just going to look at our, our, just our information about our employees, maybe just specifically what percentage are coming from this way.
Yeah, because the forty hours is like different, it's not always nine to five or whatever.
Right, we can determine that between the two districts, so it meets the needs of our staff.
Staff's leaving during the day, they're already used to going, well, I guess depending on what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't remember the data, so I, I assumed that that was just our data that showed proximity and how they did a kind of a catchment area of where the best location.
Right.
And I thought it was, I, I thought it was combined, I thought it was combined, it was definitely combined. What's that?
I thought it was combined.
Yeah, I think we're talking about doing. It'd probably be better to see just ours, because there were some that were less of us, and I assume that's probably the OCS.
And then, I mean, this, this is my only other final, yeah, concern about, because I know, and I don't really get to know whether it was Bob or you or, or, or about people, but like, this is contractual agreement with health insurances, whereas this is just an optional service. So people don't have to buy into it, they don't have to be a part of it. But I am curious about, like, we're estimating how many people, we think twenty-eight percent would be involved, but how do we know that? We're just estimating based on Marathon, Marathons formula they used.
I think very similar to when we shipped the high deductible plan, there's a lot of education that goes on, the number of meetings that took place the couple of years prior to that actually happening. There was a lot of information, so, and there's still plenty of learning that's going out around, around those plans and conversations with people about how to best facilitate that, so that, you know, they're able to be consumers themselves of their own. So I think there's, I think over time, and it's, you know, obviously it's been a shift, I think, in, in terms of employees that we have now. I think that probably if we ran the numbers, we've made probably sixty percent, I would say, in the last six, seven years that we've, we've changed. So maybe it's an influx of some younger folks who are thinking a little bit differently, I guess, when it comes to HSA and future savings. So I do know that there's, there's a lot of conversations that happen about, they're, they're paying much more close attention to, because there's some dollars.
Should we put it out there to them or not?
I mean, we could, I'm just not sure without a full understanding, you know, really understanding, like, you know, because they come in, Marathon comes in and does their whole, undergations and work around that, so, so, so people really understand that they don't know what's different.
I know, I, I understand what you're saying, and people, probably the first reaction is a negative one, but I think it's also the risk that it's like, okay, you just given us this, but we didn't ask for it, you know, what is this, another thing that you decided for us?
Yeah.
So, but I, again, it's a service, it's optional, we don't have to do it, but.
Sure.
I feel like maybe a one-pager or something with information could be, you know, the information that.
Board's considering this.
You know, like, both sides, you know, pros, cons, whatever, whatever information that we put on it, but just one page, show it all in there, and, you know, maybe that goes out as opposed to like, you know, I don't know, and then.
I don't know, it just feels like it's almost telling, because this is, this is good for us. It just seems like it could be a lot of pushback just for that reason, I could be totally wrong.
Well, I think, I think it was set up by, people are clearly saving money in HSA, but, you know, it's kind of, there's a, like a preamble. You remember when they proposed this, and it seems to be very successful, here's another option that would be considered, or.
An option, like, leading with the fact that it's an option, it's just another, another service, as opposed to, you have, this is something you have to do now, do it. I feel, that might help too, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, we can ask.
If the information's put out already, but, you know, I don't want him to say.
Is it just something to go from the head to your coffee mug?
At least, I mean, these meetings are public.
I understand.
You know, so it's not like, the information is out there, and if they, you know, if they, if they want to know, they can, they can find it. So it's not like we're hiding it, we can have open conversations, public, and be aware of it, they can come and make statements and ask questions that we can give back to them. But I do agree, I, I would, I would have wanted to be the appearance of, 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 so.
I don't know, I don't know, they have to just, just put that question.
So is that something you'd like me to think about, look together?
I think maybe, since there is no rush, or it's less important to, you know, secure that building, I think, I think we can have another round of digging in this week leading up to Monday, doesn't seem like we need to vote on Monday. I think we'll get some, maybe I'll get some answers from, maybe his board president, and we can exchange questions. And, but I, I think, more so than the philosophy, I think, I think that we got hung up, is if, if they want the physician and we don't, you know, that, that could be, if they drive hard to have the physician, we, it seems like we're more cautious that we, we would probably be more likely to do the baseline, if you will, without the physician, just with the physician's assistant and these, whatever, two nurses.
Yeah.
Seems like we'd be at least more comfortable with that as opposed to a physician, and spending more money, that's just my take right now.
I, yeah, I think too, just thinking about, and that gives you opportunity a little bit of time to, to get people engaged in it, as opposed to, you're going right in with a physician in the mental health, those, I think, are things that probably could be added or updated over time.
I do think if you put any information out, you should have a team of people ready to field all the questions.
I'm not sure who that team's.
So, and I don't know.
Nora, you've been very good about answering the question.
Well, that's the cha, the challenging part is like, you know, we've been talking about this for quite a while now, and there's still things that we're learning and understanding. You know, a one-page flyer survey probably isn't going, I don't know if it's going to get us much in terms of people really understanding, so. A lot of it sit down, one-on-one, small meetings with groups of people and say, hey, this is an, this is an option. Here's what I can do for you, you know, and your family, here's where you can save money yourself, you know, at the end of the day, which obviously will save district money as well, which helps everybody at the end of the day. So I think very similar to what's happened with the high deductible, which is a lot of small group meetings, sit downs, really, people asking questions, understanding, right, what exactly we're, it's there for.
When did you start the, those conversations in the high deductible?
Well, because it was, I mean, because it was contractual, you know, there were, it was, it was a solid, probably two years that we were beginning to have the conversations before. We actually had entered into the contractual agreement with the futures, or with the unions, sorry, all the unions. But it was a lot of, you know, that was a big change from what we, where we had originally been. And there was a lot of skepticism, I think, when, when that took place, this is going to be successful, is it not going to be successful? I think as people have learned more about it and understand it, that it's been, it's gone pretty well.
The same thing with the, when we were part of the consortium, and then we stepped away from it.
Right.
The amount of, it took quite a few discussions with that too.
I will, I shared this at our CSO, and our, our other districts in our region that are very intrigued, because they're up against the same, you know, they know that health insurance is a huge driver in their budgets, and it's, if, if you're not addressing things, it's going to spiral out of control. And it gets to the point where, you know, I think it's challenging to, to make everything work, with that being such a, a big, big part of the budget.
So, yeah, I guess if I make a suggestion, that we'll, we'll correspond with them, these representatives, if we want to change Q and As, kind of give us more information, and if we could find out if that demographic.
I might be able, they may be able to just do it in Polars, I can ask Mark about it.
See, you know, I guess I would just leave this on, or general conclusions, that if more people are on this side of whatever midway is, probably more likely that we would hit thirty percent. Then we can, on the sixteenth meeting, we can have a, a project, or, I'm sorry, agenda item that we're exec together, and then we decide whether we want to ask you to talk to groups of teachers. Okay, next topic, construction wins your RFP. So just to give you the background, you remember, you recall, we had discussions about sending out our RFP, reasoning hadn't been done in a while. So through this process, I think it's worth being aware that when, when we send out an RFP, those are BOCs, and then, correctly, they're ongoing. BOCs chooses who to send the RFP to, it doesn't go on the paper, it didn't appear to be a broad net for me, and we had two applicants, which to me really means we have one applicant, because the current applicant obviously applied, and we have one other person to compete against instead of a competitive bid. So, so we had conversations about maybe sending it back out for another RFP, I don't know what the verbiage was.
Yeah, so really, just in this resolution, we would be just rejecting these current bids, and then with the opportunity to go back out again. It doesn't preclude the current, you know, the two that submitted, they could, you know, they could make updates or changes if they wanted to. And then we just have to look at timeline, right, as far as, as far as that goes, we want to put it out for two weeks, or thirty days, there, there really, there's no requirement when it comes to that. Talked to John Reed at, at BOCs, so there's no requirement on the amount of time that you have to have it out there. But summer's, summer's going to come quick with the amount of things that we're going to have to get done.
What was on the last, do we know on the last one?
What was it?
It was ten, it was ten days.
It was ten days, it's ten days.
How many pages is the document they're filling out?
They're, it's pretty, it's pretty substantial, yeah, I mean, it's a good amount.
All right, I, I thought RFPs.
It's a good amount of work.
Yeah, that's tight, but we need to move some, you know.
But, you know, if you're, it's what your comfort level is as far as, we certainly go back out, or we can use BOCs again, or we can also get it in the paper, which we talked to them about.
Did they do that?
I think so.
I, I, and I'm just, again, I'm learning here, I'm making reference to some of these topics, so I, I just, I feel like if we're going to put an RFP out, the assumption, I should assume though, is that we want a broad net, we want to do that supply that, and there's many people interested, that we can filter through applicants and get the best candidate. So if that's something that's in the language between our relationship with BOCs, that that's kind of just how they do it, I would, I would also want to look at that for future RFPs, that, you know, we, we don't want to go through putting RFPs out all the time, if we have a schedule, and we put them out every three to five years, we know that we're, that Canada's a huge area, and we're going to take the time to filter through, and get the set we like, and then try to resolution, so.
Yeah, I think we can request that, and then we'll go ahead and do that, if they know that that's what we want, they'll include that in the process.
But is that, this should be a vote, right?
Yeah, we just need a vote on this resolution so that we can go back out again.
And then, and then a procedure change, you want to do that as a new proposal or possible? To propose that, how we do it with BOCs, so if there's some language that says the BOCs.
I. We can just tell them, I think, as far as that goes.
When we request that they put the RFP out for us, we can make the stipulations that we want it to be advertised here, and we advertise it. We want it to be published here, there.
So I guess the question would be, I just need to, from our perspective, probably go two weeks, or do you want to see thirty days? So we'd be looking, you know, obviously we have to go through proposals when they come in, set up interviews for the committee, and then, you know, obviously reference checks and things of that nature, and ultimately probably getting the recommendation to you guys. You know, and as I had mentioned, there's opportunity to, if the board wants to interview, you know, who the, who the committee chooses, you certainly could do that too. I just don't know, if you feel two weeks is long enough, or would you rather thirty days? I was saying, no, we're up to the end of the holiday season, we won't worry about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When does this, when would this go out? Because I can't really be, there's a date on there.
I would be in contact with John tomorrow to say, you know, push it back out. We, the only thing holding us up is that it should be submitted by eight.
Maybe January second or January third, whatever, the first one day is back.
Yeah, that's, that's the five.
About fourteen more days.
Right. That works. Just need a vote.
Need a motion to vote on the, what's the terminology, termination of RSPs or rejection, or re, of RSPs, get a motion?
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
I'm.
Clay?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And then, public panel, the public panel, the motion to adjourn?
Move.
Exactly.
Anybody miss a point?